Good evening and welcome. The board concluded our executive session at 6:27 PM this evening, and there was no action taken during that session. I would like to call to order the regular CSD Board meeting for December 13, 2022, at 6:34 PM. Thank you all for joining us this evening and for our last meeting of the 2022 school year. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. At this time, all that are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which expands, longesht, and broadeth, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening? All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Thank you. May I have a second? All right. All in favor of approving the agenda for this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda meeting is approved. Our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the previous board meeting and work session. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November board meeting? May I have a second? All in favor of approving the minutes from the November board meetings, please say aye. Thank you. The minutes of the November board meetings are approved. Tonight's spotlight includes the Decatur Virtual Academy graduation, the German exchange program, and Beacon Hill Middle School. Dr. Chrissy Bean will kick us off with the DVA graduation. Please welcome Dr. Bean.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Decatur Board. Thank you for having us. We have two separate celebrations tonight from the teaching and learning department we are very excited about. First, we will be celebrating Decatur Virtual Academy, our wonderful Decatur Virtual Academy team, and a couple of our wonderful students. One of our primary advantages of DVA is allowing students the flexibility to attend their own schedule. As a result, we have two December graduates that are here that we're going to honor here tonight. Under the direction of Ms. Heidi Watley, DVA is recognizing its vision to provide a high-quality education for these students in a wide variety of reasons need an alternative experience. So now, Ms. Watley will share some of the phenomenal work happening at DVA. Good evening, Detective Herman, Board Chair Johnson, and Board members. We appreciate the opportunity to share about Decatur Virtual Academy this evening. I'd like to introduce Ms. Victoria Lee and Ms. Karen Canty, our DVA teachers, who are going to help me tell you about the work that we do.
Good morning, good afternoon, and good evening, all the audience. I am super excited to be here tonight because we are here to celebrate again these two wonderful graduates, and we're also here to tell you, well, to tell you a little bit about DVA, and also to tell you how our parents and students feel about us.
We surveyed our families and students this fall and asked them to give us three words to describe DVA. This word cloud represents their worth. We were very helpful that, I mean, we're very happy that helpful showed up because we definitely try to be helpful.
For that same survey, here's what our students and parents had to say about our staff. I think to comment they are determined to help those kids succeed in bodies and spirit in which we try to work. Thus far this year, we've served 65 students. You see the breakdown here. By January, it'll be 70 or 80 students as we're still having students choose DVA for spring. 25 students are taking classes online at Decatur High School, and the remainder are full-time students online at DVA. You can see the reasons that our students are with us. The majority have a mental health, mental or physical health issue. We have students who need, we have students who are at DVA for alternative school. The racial breakdown is similar to the population of total students in CSD with a higher percentage of black students. We collaborate very closely to ensure that our students have wraparound support and all that they need to be successful. Our social work and counseling teams have been awesome in making sure students have what they need. Each school, sending students has an administrator that coordinates with DVA to ensure that the transitions are smooth. I need to say how grateful we are to these people as well as the counseling and social work teams to just help us find the best plan for our students to meet their needs, to graduate, and to see their schooling. One of our Decatur Virtual Academy students on the next slide. Please note in the video, Christina talks about Georgia Virtual School. That's one of the platforms that we partner with to offer classes, but she really.
I started Georgia Virtual because I wasn't doing too good in person. I was turned, I was not going to school, and finally something happened, and they told me I had to do virtual. And I wasn't too thrilled with the idea at first, but after doing virtual for about a year now, I really enjoy it. I, I think that it's helped with my social anxiety. I think I learned better this way, my grades look better. Changed my life for the better, definitely not getting as much trouble as I was before. And the people who have been helping me, such as Ms. Watley, Ms. Canty, Ms. Lee, have been. Georgia Virtual has also helped me achieve some of my goals. I want to get my CNA in nursing before I graduate. And I also, one of my other goals is graduating on time, obviously. And I feel like Georgia Virtual has helped out a lot because my expectancy was not too great when I was in person, but I've been doing a lot better now. And yeah, nursing has been a dream of mine for a really long time. I've been wanting to be a nurse since I was a little kid. I should also say thank you to the board of education for even having this option. It's very great, and I'm very grateful for it. Thank you.
We are so proud of Christina. DVA, these are some of the things that our students and parents say. Flexibility, real-time status on how students are doing, deadlines are clear. Check-ins, we have recheck-ins, they can check in at 8:30 AM, noon, and at 3:00 or 3:30. Less distractions, being able to do schoolwork without having to go to the school building and just direct the class. Here are some of the comments our students submitted in our survey about why DVA is important to them. DVA is important in life. Different kids have different ways of learning in unique situations in life. DVA accommodates those needs to give students another choice on how they want to do their schooling. In case anything happens to an in-person student, DVA should be there to open, to be there and open for everyone to join. If students are uncomfortable to be in person when learning, or they have a high phobia against socializing and germs and disease, then DVA should always be there for a welcoming community for education.
All right. So when we surveyed the parents, here are some of the responses that the parents submitted. They said, "Kids aren't one size fits all in terms of learning and social needs. It's important to have broader options of learning available without having to leave the district. Attending DVA has been a saving grace for us, allowing us to create a schedule that works for our daughter who has had trouble in the past attending in person on a regular and consistent basis, and it provides students the opportunity to grow, learn, and develop in a non-traditional way for success."
Next, we will honor our graduates. The graduates, please come up at the end of your slide, and we're going to have Ms. Foster and Ms. Furman will give you gorgeous moments. First graduate is Kendrick Antonio Lanier. And we are so proud. Requirements for high school graduation with honors. He finished his final semester with all As. He has committed to attend Vanderbilt in January on an athletic scholarship. Third edition of the All-American Bowl in San Antonio, Texas. And you achieved all your dreams. But Liam, Ms. Canty, have a little gift for you behind this table.
Can I take a point of privilege in jumping this picture?
Yes, please.
I stopped caring in sixth, seventh grade.
Congratulations, Miss Bean. Congratulations. Has met all of her requirements for graduation with honors. She earned the TTFA Community Service Recognition. That's the white court that gets her graduation. She's been selected as a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, and she persevered to complete these last few classes this semester. So, our other graduates, we would like to thank the board for supporting the work of DVA, which has allowed these students to complete their high school careers at their own pace. Thank you very much.
Awesome.
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Watley and her team. Thank you for all that you've done. You've had very huge task ahead of you. You did this last year with grace, and you make it look even easier this year. So, thank you. You can tell that you are truly dedicated to your students, and so grateful for your leadership, Ms. Watley.
Yes. And congratulations again to Kit and Kendrick. We are so proud of you all, and you all will go down in the history books as the DHS first Virtual Academy graduate. So, it's an honor to have you all. And now, Dr. Bean will give us the next presentation on the German exchange program.
Yes. Thank you so much. So, that's really hard to follow. So, always aligned with our core values in EL and IB, I'm always looking for opportunities for our community to collaborate outside of Decatur. So, an opportunity to join an exchange with the German government presented itself. I jumped at it. Fortunately, I have some CSD education. Mr. Ron Johnson is our program coordinator. So, we have been participating in an exchange with the city schools of Decatur teachers and teachers from Berlin, Germany. The purpose of the exchange is to foster cultural and professional relations in the field of education and to, for the German teachers to learn. They came in October, late October, early November, to learn about American elementary schools and have pedagogical discussions and serve our school operations. Educational and cultural excursions have served to broaden, helped to serve, excuse me, helped to broaden the teacher's cultural knowledge and experiences in the United States as well. So, the portion, this portion of the exchange has been funded entirely by the German government so far, and no CSD funds have been used at this point. In June of 2023, our teachers and Mr. Johnson will travel to Berlin to have these same experience there and learn about the educational system in Germany and have cultural exchange as well. So, in particular, they'll get to see how the schools are organized, the instruction is delivered, and the hope of this exchange is to really collaborate and share new ideas and advance the achievement of our students in cross-cultural studies and enhance international-mindedness for all parties involved. So, first, we're going to see a video that highlights some of the wonderful experiences we had while the teachers were here, and we will hear from the German teachers about their feedback of visiting Decatur. And then, we have a few of our team members that will share their experience thus far. Thank you.
My name is Kristen Peters. I'm one of six Berlin Elementary School teachers who took part in a teacher exchange program with Decatur schools, and it was really one of the best experiences in my life. We stayed with colleagues, we went to work with them, we had a chance to see their classes, had a chance to see their lessons. I met other people, other teachers from their schools, could see other classes. We interacted a lot with students, and it was a great experience. There was so much to learn, and I try to incorporate some of these things into my lessons now as well.
My name is Farah Castle. I'm one of the German teachers that has visited and attended Decatur in October of 2022 this year. As you see, it's snowing here now, and I love thinking of the nice and warm weather in Berlin. But it wasn't only the weather, it was the people. They were so warm and welcoming. We had a great time. Thank you so much for sharing, sharing your work with us, sharing your home with us and your activities. We had great joy. We visited the schools, we learned a lot. We visited the middle school, the high school, the elementary school. We even visited three universities, but also the culture. We had a Halloween party, and my son, when I told him that we did, he said, "Oh, Mom, I think you're doing the whole of American culture in just two weeks." And that's how it was.
Hello. My name is Vera Wenzel. I'm from Germany. I didn't teach in the city of Berlin. And imagine I was in Decatur, Georgia, to meet my American colleagues there. It was all a great experience, but the best part of it was to see them teaching the students, to meet them everybody. They all were so hospitable and kind and funny.
Hi. My name is Miriam Jantosch. And for me, the highlight of my trip to Decatur, Georgia, was getting to know all the wonderful people I met there and being able to see and learn how they organize their everyday diet as teachers in the United States. And also, I really enjoyed visiting primary schools in Decatur. How primary school work in the United States or in Decatur. And I even saw something which I now like to integrate into my own teaching. So, listen to this.
Hello. My name is Artesha Jantosch. I'm a teacher at London. I completed a Blanca class during my autumn week day, and I had the chance to get to know the American way of learning and the school system, and it was really interesting and great. I had the chance to get to know a lot of different types of schools and cultures. And I've already told my principal that I would like to change some things in my class. I learned from the US base. Thank you very much.
Oh, it's raining. It's raining. It's harsh. Maria, this is your, Maria, this is your.
Well, we wanted to say thank you, you're so great, and we love you.
We love you.
Since you're here, you are going to come over, and we don't want you to step up.
Hi. Good evening, Mrs. Bean. My name is Noel Freerich, and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Tally Street. And I would like to share my perspective of this exchange. First of all, my exchange piqued my personal interest because I've been married to a German, a Berliner in fact, for over 30 years. We have traveled and lived in Germany with the whole family, and I have a parental view of the German education system. Although I was not new to any of the culture or traditions of Germany, I gained much of my, much insight from the different perspectives of our exchange teachers. Professionally, I was able to have great conversation with all six of the teachers. We compared notes on everything within the school experience from classroom management, teaching and instruction, technology, what was it for them, and serving lunch and playground time. I am very excited to be able to see our German exchange teachers in their own environment next summer, and even more excited to see what methods I will bring back. For all these reasons, I hope this is the start of an ongoing tradition in city schools of Decatur. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Laura Pitts. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Winnetou Park. I'm losing my voice, as a lot of teachers are, as time is here. But it's nice to see Ms. White, former leader, and I got to teach her youngins, and my classmates and friends, Ms. Johnson Davis. We did our specialist degree together. So, thanks for having us tonight. Global citizenship is the term for social, political, environmental, and economic actions of globally-minded individuals and communities on a worldwide scale. So, as teachers, I feel like it's really valuable to broaden our own perspective so that we can then lead our teachers, lead our students by example. So, when I heard about this exchange, I jumped on it, especially because it was specifically made for kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers. So, many of these are aimed at upper grades. So, opportunities such as this teacher exchange not only run our own perspective as teachers and to help them in turn run our students' perspective, but I also feel like it can have a deeper impact in city schools of Decatur. And I think that it can even attract and retain high-quality teachers who are also globally-minded.
For me, there were a lot of partnerships that's created through this adventure that we took on with Georgia State, their College of Education, like we talked about. I had parents in the district and outside of the district, St. James, Buckhead also donated the Sprinter van so we could get people around. So, it was just really fun being able to organize all this, and it could not happen without the teachers also opening their homes up to all these other educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's so exciting. I can't wait to hear about you all's experiences when you come back.
Yes. Make sure you guys come back and tell us how it was.
Yep. And so now, please welcome Mr. Derek Thomas to the podium to share the Beacon Hill Spotlight.
All right. So, thank you, Dr. Furman, Board Chair Johnson Davis, and Board members. We are excited to highlight just a couple of great things we have going on at Beacon Hill Middle School. When we started thinking about what we wanted to spotlight, we really focused on our SLT, and the work that they're doing to ensure student success for all kids. But I also wanted to take a few minutes after they speak to actually spotlight some of those very kids, to have them speak about some of the work that they're doing. So, we're first going to have a board chair, a SLT chair, Ms. Robinson and slowly come on up. And then, and Mrs. Lick, you may as well. They're going to speak to you guys about our SLT.
Thank you, Principal Thomas, and Board members, Dr. Furman. We're excited to talk about what's happening at Beacon Hill Middle School. My name's Ayanna Robinson. I have a middle schooler, a seventh grader at Beacon Hill, and a senior at DHS. And this is my second year as chair of the Beacon Hill Middle School SLT. My husband Elliot and I have been a member of the Decatur community for nearly 20 years. I'm here today to share with my two fellow SLT members about our experience at Beacon Hill this year and working with Principal Thomas. We also have another colleague or another parent member of the board, Meredith Parks, who was not able to join us today. From the moment that Principal Thomas accepted the position, I started to hear buzz about who he is and how he would engage students and parents to strengthen the Beacon Hill Middle School community, and he truly has done just that. From our very first meeting, we appreciated how Principal Thomas engaged us as strategic advisors. He truly recognizes and values that we live in the community, understands the challenges parents face, and can help him stay current on what issues may be swirling. He's looked for ways to engage us. We've spent time reviewing the school improvement plan and digging into the data to offer our thoughts on what can be done to improve the student and teacher experience. We've looked at academic data. We've looked at attendance data and discipline data, as well as mental health stats, and what's happening in our middle school. And I must say, on more than one occasion, I was very disturbed with what I was seeing, but it was important for us to really truly understand what happens in those halls during school day. To give a real recent example of how we've been able to work and engage and partner with Dr. Thomas, he had Dr. McFadden, Principal Thomas, I was going to give you a promotion. An educational promotion. But he had Dr. McFadden come and present to us the Math Pathways Program that he was going to be presenting to the parents the following week. And he gave us this preview in advance. And what was really helpful about that is that it gave us an opportunity to really have a robust discussion, to ask questions and to probe. But most importantly, we were able to share our thoughts and perspectives on how best to approach this conversation with parents and the likely questions and concerns that they would have. It was a very helpful step for him and for us to ensure that it was a productive dialogue. We believe that this is a model to help best utilize us and other SLTs, and we appreciate that Principal Thomas continues to find meaningful ways to engage that, engage us in those conversations. And with that, I'll turn it over to Courtney and Patricia Thomas to offer two additional observations.
Thanks for having us. My name is Patricia Leachell. I have twins in seventh grade at Beacon Hill. So, to continue on with what Ayanna was saying about the opportunities, potential opportunities for the SLT best within CSD, there seemed to be a lack of awareness and a lack of understanding of our SLTs. And I will note, aspects of this will be addressed in our new strategic plans. We're very excited about that. We believe that there is an opportunity to better educate the broader communities about what the SLT is, its purpose and function, and the best way to communicate with the SLT. So, we're recommending some initiatives such as mini-educational campaign by CSD for both parents and the greater community. This could begin at college heights and the lower elementary schools, and information can also be shared at meet and greets and back-to-school events. We can even introduce some of the SLT members, and they can talk about their roles, especially as we are asking parents to then run for these positions. We want parents in the community to know the SLTs exist, but more importantly, how they can best utilize each SLT. So, we want to cultivate a culture within CSD where parents will re. So, we want to cultivate a culture within CSD where parents will re... ...sit on playmates, things going on at the schools through both the PTA and the SLT. They need to know the difference as well and what their responsibilities are. So, for example, like, how do they find and contact the SLT members? For our school, our email could be linked on the page, but not currently there. And we can also include minutes of past meetings, so parents can look at the minutes and the upcoming agenda so they can determine if they want to attend the meeting. In addition, to make it even easier, one of the main contact pages for each of the schools could have like a link to a form that goes directly to all of the SLT members, and then we can get those things and respond. So, we believe this group can be a bridge between the school administration and the community. CSD and each school can leverage the parent perspectives of this group before presenting to the broader community like was done with the math. And the SLTs can bring up issues to the school administration that are circulating in the community, especially through parents reaching us directly, and be a source of factual information for the community. So, to effectively do so, it would be very helpful for CSD to dictate a preferred process for how the SLTs seek feedback and input from our respective communities. Don't think Facebook is necessarily the best method. Principal Thomas, thus far, has done an excellent job of promoting our SLT meeting via our weekly newsletter. However, this might be overlooked if you don't really understand what the SLT is. So, if we want to elevate the role of the SLTs and truly utilize them to improve our schools and the district, we need their purpose and role to be better understood by our community. Thank you, Madam, I'll give you one more.
Thank you for having us, I'm Courtney Foley. I have four kids and four different CSD schools. I make the rounds. And we wanted to take this opportunity to celebrate Principal Thomas and what he's doing to not only engage the SLT, but also the students, the faculty, the staff, and the parents of Beacon Hill Middle School, and also the broader community. He has created and utilizes a student advisory committee. He offers monthly coffee chats to engage parents on topics that are important to them like the grading policy and the math curriculum. He's partnered with the PTA to put on season events, like the tailgate at the beginning of the school year, and he's doing dances for each grade level, and the sixth grade dance with youth. And he also personally attends many, many, many functions, from training events to arts events, community events. He even attended a recent day for school meeting. We're not sure if we've seen a principal do that, but there are some real concerns about kids crossing the train tracks at Beacon Hill. And he put on a ceremony for, at the school, the student-led event that he found meaningful ways to incorporate the community into that event. I want to thank you for that.
I just wanted to end with one last thought, that we really want to reposition that SLT to really be seen as an advocate for the school, and to be able to be present and to bring our voices and concerns and what we're hearing that's happening in the school, to the school board, and to have the right format and forums to be able to do that, and being able to have that bridge and relationship to make sure that we understand what you're doing and what that means to the schools where we are, because we are very invested, we are, giving our time, just like many people do, to function in this role, and want to make sure that we're additive to all the discussions that are being had. With that, thank you again for this opportunity, and, Ms. Thomas? Oh, any questions?
First, thank you all for your service, because it really is service. I mean, we use the word volunteer quite quickly, but having started this job, I know exactly how much time you end up dedicating to it. So, just thank you all for what you do so correctly.
Wanted to, I was going to piggyback the same thing, just thank you all for your time and your dedication to Beacon Hill Middle. All right, thank you.
All right, so, I have your checks ready, we can do more. So, really, the SLT that we have, I really appreciate all the work that they put in, and not only about the work, it's why they're doing the work, it's clear to see that they're working for the entire school. A lot of people join certain committees and they have some type of motive to do so, but they truly are here for the entire school, so I appreciate what you guys are doing, so thank you very much. I want to take just a few minutes to briefly introduce some students to you all, they're going to talk to you a little bit about what they are doing to make sure that every kid enjoys the middle school experience. I have a group, they call it Principal Advisory Committee, better known as the PAC, and it's twenty-seven kids, twenty-four of which were nominated by teachers, and I saved a few speeches for myself. And they are just going to briefly give you a little insight into what they do to make sure that every kid has a great experience at Beacon Hill.
Our role as members of the PAC is to work as a liaison between the principal and the students. We need to determine what we want Beacon Hill to look like, the lens of a student. Principal Thomas shares a lot of great ideas, but he acknowledges that, that he does not owe it to us, and his ideas might not really capture what we want it to be.
So, this is where the PAC comes in. We meet with Mr. Thomas at least once a month, maybe twice, we share our ideas and thoughts with him and like discuss other important topics. We're also role models, we're also role models and support our school's mission. We chaperone and assist in grade level deficits. We will be hosting our annual nutrition and study and staff luncheon.
We will be engaging with, we're engaging with guest speaker, Ms. Courtney Bishop, as a wrap-up to native American heritage month.
We will be engaging in ideas for celebrations for Black History Month and Women's History Month.
And we will be discussing, discussing Principal Thomas' goal three on the school improvement plan.
Ultimately, our end goal is to help Principal Thomas make sure students don't just do school, but that they have a middle school experience, one that will provide them a lifetime of joy and memories. Any questions?
No questions, but I just wanted to say Beacon Hill and Mr. Thomas are so lucky to have you all on his advisory committee. I can tell that just from this brief interaction that you all are just phenomenal students invested in Beacon Hill, so thank you all.
Yeah, I want to share that one of the goals of the board is that, and the school system, is that every student has a relationship in the school building and no one feels alone. And that only happens in a school where there are leaders to see things, to bring it to the principal, they can't be everywhere at once. And so, thanks for being those leaders, thanks for being those people in the classroom, and I'm sure you have some proud parents and guardians at home, because, thank you.
Yeah.
Please guys, introduce yourselves, they're representation across all grades, you said seven.
Thank you all. That was just really inspiring spotlight, yes. So, at this time, we will move on to public comment. Dr. Furman, do we have any members of the community signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have two, Madam Chair.
All right. As a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience, the public comment portion of the meeting is a time for the public to address the board, and is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Person speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comments should be addressed to the body, to the board as a body and not to individual members. Speakers should be courteous and professional. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comment. However, a member of the administrative team will follow up with person speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Furman, would you please call our first speaker?
First speaker is Stephanie Hudson.
Hello. I'm Stephanie Hudson, and my kids are enrolled in the city school. I recently learned of two concerning and very common disciplinary practices in the school system that I wanted to be felt aware of. Children in the lower upper elementary schools are being made to sit at tables by themselves in the class. That is sometimes for a day, that is sometimes for several days, and it can be weeks. Parents are not being told when this is happening to the children. And an additional punishment or an alternative punishment, depending on teacher, children are being given a solo silent lunch, where they are made to sit alone in the cafeteria and not speak to anyone. These actions are public shame of children. And I would like each of you to think back to when you were six, or eight, or eleven, how the punishment such as that would have affected you. This is not furthering equity and inclusion in our school system, and it is detrimental to student health, their mental health. And I'm asking the board to investigate these practices. My understanding is there is no written record test of these actions, this is not in the handbook, the code comments, and I don't think it's being included in the calculation of what disciplinary actions are being handed out to students. I'd like the board to look into it and put a stop to these practices.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Catherine Carter.
I live on Canler Street in Decatur, and I think I've been before y'all another time. I guess I just like me, I don't know. We all get nervous when taxes are being discussed, and everybody knows taxes in Decatur are high. A large portion of that is the school taxes, and I for one and many others are very grateful that we do get an exemption. My understanding is that you'll be talking about the S5 and S6 exemption, but primarily the S5, and that will not affect me, fortunately. However, I need, I wanted to make you understand that there are people in Decatur whose income is very, very low, who do not live in subsidized housing. For example, my neighbor who is eighty-nine years old lives in the house, and she taught in the Atlanta school system and they did not take out social security taxes for twenty years. She lives on an income of three thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars. And as you can understand, a person with that kind of income would not be able to remain in her home at all without the exemption the seniors get. Fortunately, I can help her when she needs to, but do understand that this is terribly, terribly important to a lot of us old people, and we would, she would have to move in with family out of town, and I would probably move without it. So, if you just keep that in mind as she talks about taxes and know that we are dependent on that, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you to our community members who've come out and shared their comments this evening. At this time, I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Furman for Superintendent comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple things to address this evening. You doing that, or am I doing that, Esther? Right, so, I'm gonna, I've got a string of topics to go through this evening, and then at the end, or in the middle, if we want to kind of break it up and see if the board has any questions or comments, just whenever that's, we kind of feel that questions are bubbling up. So, I did want to talk and update the board, we are making progress as expected on our policy revisions. In your agenda packet this evening is the last big batch of policies that are for first review. If those are all approved in January, we will have completed the majority of our policy revisions, and then every month, probably two or three policies at a time to make sure that we round out and by the end of the year have the complete policies revision, including reform policies, and two of which are on the agenda this evening for our first read. I wanted to update the board, I went to the DAB Chamber of Commerce meeting, and they're a wonderful group of people, and making some really strong connections with people in our community that can really help serve our students, one of them being Worksource DAB. We did have a partnership with Worksource DAB before COVID. COVID happened, that kind of interrupted it, but we are rejuvenating that partnership, and we had a great call with Dr. Jones, Dwayne Spruill, and Principal Lottstran to talk about how we can re-engage with Worksource DAB. Worksource DAB is funded by the Worksource Innovation Opportunity Act, so all the opportunities and things that they can provide our youth are cost-free to the student. So, we're looking at various paid work experiences, how they can get students' job ready and have students' job shadow, so really excited to get those partnerships moving forward with Worksource DAB. I think that will really help a significant amount of our students stay focused on the next step, what they're going to do after they leave high school. We did have our dyslexia task force second meeting, December second, and making good progress with that task force, they have now broken up into working groups. So, there's three working groups, they are going to evaluate and make recommendations to the board on the screeners that we use, they're going to talk about what information and resources do our parents need, so they're well-informed about dyslexia, and then they're also going to look at our practices in the classroom and make recommendations on what is the support, education, and training and resources our teachers need as well. So, we're excited to hear what they come back with after they've had some time to do that work, and they will be presenting a formal report to the board, March or April, I can't remember the date off the top of my head, but we are looking forward to that. They're a great group, they've come together, we've created some norms that guide our work and you... Where this group is someone who, this is a group that will make some really big progress in our, in our work with dyslexia.
Just going to ask, to the extent that there might be budget impacts, the March side of that would be better than that you feel like?
Got it, okay, yep. And then our MTSS task force, we had planned on getting that launched at about the same time as the dyslexia task force, but our team members, it's just, there's a lot out there to get done, and this has been delayed, but we are going to be reevaluating when we can get this group up and going, and then also looking at potential outside partners who may run that task force for us and complete that evaluation work that we want to see. So, we have some options to move forward on that, so we can also complete that update and review our MTSS processes. I had the opportunity to, in a total fangirl moment, to sit with two superintendent mentors of mine, Dr. Beasley from Clayton County, and Dr. Herring from Atlanta Public Schools on a superintendent panel at the Learn for Life State of Education event, where we answered questions about teacher retention, learning loss, equity and resources distribution in our school systems, and student mental health. So, it was great to learn what other superintendents are doing in our community, but the central theme was, is it takes everyone in the community to do the work? And I'm really excited about how we're engaging everyone through our strategic plan and how we can capitalize on the resources in our community going forward as we move through the strategic planning process. Did want to share some data that they shared at... Is a group focused on supporting education in the Atlanta metro area, six districts, it's Cobb, Gwinnett, Fulton, APS, Decatur, and Gwinnett. So, they take all that data and look at it, and they've captured some information. So, they captured some demographic information that I think when we compare the metro area to city schools of Decatur, what that difference looks like. But I know that we want to make sure our staff are representative of our population in the metro area, so we're looking at this information for a couple reasons, how do we compare, and then what do we need to be shooting for as we look at, what do we want our demographics of our staff to represent? So, you can see the difference in students of color in the metro area versus city schools of Decatur, the low-income variance there is pretty significant, and also the percent of students that are English language learners. They also shared some graphs to show student achievement over the past couple, kind of pre-COVID, post-COVID. So, the first two pencils on each of those graphs represent the metro area averages. So, the first graph, the yellow pencil, that is the percent of third graders proficient at reading on the GMAT assessment in two thousand and nineteen, and then two thousand and twenty-two. So, you can see overall, the reading, percent of students reading on grade level went down in the metro area. We did increase, but I just put our overall level of mastery of reading at third grade was ninety percent. The third, the second graph, the orange pencil, those are percent of eighth graders scoring proficient or above on the eighth grade math, GMATs. So you can see that also decreased in the metro area, sixty-one percent for city schools of Decatur, but that was a big decrease for us. We did see that trend in our eighth grade math scores going down. Graduation rates have been climbing in the metro area, and we did see ours pretty much stayed steady. We always, we have been sitting in that upper ninety percent. The other thing we talked about at the metro, at this meeting were, like as I mentioned, teacher retention. And this is a big issue, not just for city schools of Decatur, but for our whole nation. And they shared some data that I thought was very sobering. And this first graph represents some data from PAGE, which is an organization that supports teachers in Georgia. And it says that about half of our teachers will be planning to leave the profession in the next five years. That is very eye-opening, and to me, very shocking, that we really need to be thinking about, number one, how do we change their minds so that they stay? And then what is our retention, what is our, how do we grow teachers and attract teachers in, over the next five years? And they cited the reason for why teachers are leaving. They selected burnout as the overall number one, sixty-one percent said that burnout is one of the reasons that they'll be leaving. And we can see that in our teachers. All the things we ask our teachers to do, the high expectations is just really causing a high level of burnout for our staff.
Those numbers, fifty-five percent likely, what year is that from? And then, and then do they have...
It was pre, this is pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID.
So this is, they haven't redone this since COVID. I imagine it's much different.
And we, then on the, do we know the teacher's ages of any...
No, not, not for this graph, yeah.
Did the next slide, that's like ten percent because of retirement?
Yes, yep. So one of their key findings was the amount of stress on teachers compared to professionals that are not in the education career, or in the education field. So you can see frequent job-related stress is impacting seventy-five percent of our teachers, eighty-five percent of our principals, compared to thirty-five percent in non-teaching fields, which again was, wow, that's a lot. And for us to take this information into consideration as we work through our strategic planning process. And then burnout, you can see that was also higher for workers in the education field. So along with this is this week, or not along with this, but to give people a second perspective of what are our students seeing, I had our first superintendent advisory team meeting. It was amazing. I could spend, I could just go back to the classroom and be such a happy camper because it was so great to be with the kids and just hear their experiences. So I asked them four types of questions and then some follow-up questions to get deeper into their thoughts. So the first group was focusing on, is the learning meaningful for them? Is it tailored to their needs? When they're at school, when are their needs getting met? What matters to them? And one of the top things that they said is when their teacher is passionate about their content area makes a huge difference to them getting something out of the class. And that was really great to hear because they said that they have lots of teachers that are passionate about what they do, and passionate about their content. But this is a thing you're going to see throughout, is the students kept bringing up that their content needs to be related to real life. They want to see, how do they take what they're learning in the classroom and apply it to real-life scenarios? They want learning to be meaningful and motivating. They also talked, they said they would like more conversation and less note-taking, and that they really want to see the school system improve our world language program. The second group talked about, do you have control over what, how, and when you learn? Do you get to make choices? And if you could learn about anything, what would it be? Students were really stumped by this. It was facilitating, facilitating, and they pretty much said, we never get any choices. And now, this is just like a focus group of students. So they, they just say they're given, told what to do, they select courses, but they really aren't a good selection of courses for them. And they said, what, so then they started saying, here's what we want as it relates to choice. And they said, very much so that they want to see career-oriented and interest-based classes. They want less pressure to form, to move into the IB diploma program, and you're going to see that comment again. They want to make sure, again, hands-on, real-world experiences. They said that they are so eager to be out in the community and be engaged in community service projects, and they also want different ways to master, to show mastery of what they're learning. The fourth question we talked about was, how do they develop a positive sense of themselves? And how are we engaging them in meaningful ways to combat inequities? And they shared that only a few teachers at this point are really helping students engage in addressing inequitable things across the nation and in their community. And again, they want to see more opportunities for students to build community, to do community service time, again, integrate hands-on learning experiences. And they came up with an example. They would love at the high school to have a maker space area where they could build things, create things, and then partner with the College and Career Academy to sell those things, to market them. So they have, they were already brainstorming. And they also were talking about how they would love to model what it's like to be a high school student at elementary schools by going and performing plays or concerts. So they have all these really great ideas. And then the last question, we talked, a relationship-rich environment, and what kind of impact you're learning. And again, they really, they talked about teachers and they talked about their friends. And they said, what matters to them is when a teacher gets to know them, that they're forgiving, that they pay attention to the student. But they said they feel pressured with academics. They said they feel like their teachers are really pressuring them to put, to move into IB classes. And one of the students was sharing, she was trying to talk with a teacher about, does she do IBDP or does she not? And she was sharing, like the teacher basically said, well, if you want to go to college, you have to take IBDP classes. And she's like, ugh. So, and it was, it was stressful. You could hear in her voice how stressful that decision was for her. And for friends, they listed that, you know, they know they have friends that are supportive when they hold them accountable, which I thought was amazing to say, I really like friends to hold me accountable, that they're authentic, they'll be vulnerable and comfort you. But they said there is pressure to fit in in groups at the high school. They do feel judged on certain aspects. But they said that peer pressure in the high school is more subtle than other schools, and there were several students there that had been at other high schools. And they did talk about substance abuse at the high school and how prevalent that is. So those were just some of the summaries, things that came up at the student advisory team meeting. So the next phase with this group is I'll be sharing these summaries with our strategic planning action team, so they can hear from the students and the charter renewal team as well, on how do we build a system that's working for what our students want? And then I'll take what our strategic planning team comes up with, and I will be sharing that with the student advisory team and getting their input. Do you guys like this? Is this meeting that need that we talked about before? Or do we need to go back and think about something a little more innovative that's going to meet what our students want? And then I'll share that back with our strategic planning team. So we'll go through that cycle a couple times to make sure that we really are using that student voice to help guide our work. Any questions on student advisory? Okay. Strategic planning update, I did want to update the board on where we are with our strategic plan. So we've completed that SWOT analysis phase, we've completed the planning team meeting. We are working through the action team process, and we're also working on the vision and mission process, and then moving towards that plan approval for our March-April date for the board. So I wanted to update the board specifically on the work of the action team. So we had our action team meeting facilitated by GLISI and GSBA on November tenth. And at about halfway through the day, I started getting a read of the room that they were kind of like, they were done. They were not ready to continue, they were getting very frustrated. It was, you could tell, like this is, they're not happy with how this process is going. So we finished today, I did some reflection, I touched base with several members of the teams that were there, and kind of got some, a real sense of how they were feeling. And really what we, what I came to understand is, they were setting the goals, they were working on the aspirational pieces, but when it got to, we need to plan initiatives to achieve these goals, that's when we hit the wall. And as I reflected on that with team members, is we already have a lot of stuff going. So stepping back, thinking, how do we take inventory on what we're doing? What type of strategic planning will be working for our, needs to be catered to our system, our school, our needs, and our community? So I did some research on different types of strategic planning for school systems and came upon what they call responsive strategic planning for school districts, and some great resources, and some great lead, learning from that. And one of the big takeaways with it, if you plan in a vacuum, is detrimental to that plan. So that helped me realize, we really need to make sure as we move through the rest of this process, it isn't just our action team meeting, planning in isolation, but that we're looking at, how do we incorporate student voice? How do we incorporate input from our community in a more in-depth way? And then thinking about some pivots that we need to make so that we can still have a really robust strategic plan to put forward to the board, but one that also will meet our needs and help us capture, what do we need to keep doing? And make those decisions very clear and very deliberately? And then what do we need to plan to do next? So then, what came up from that is, we really need to do an initiative inventory. We need to take a look at, what are we doing as an initiative? So our action team members are doing an inventory. They're taking a list of, here's all the things we are doing in the school system that are current initiatives. But I've also asked our teacher advisory council to take an inventory initiative. Because I know when we ask leaders what an initiative is, they may not think it's an initiative, but a teacher may feel, that is an initiative. So I want to make sure I get the voice of the teacher in here as well. Once we have that list of all the current initiatives, we're going to plot them on this chart so we can see, hey, what is easy? What are we doing that we need to keep? And as we read through the research, it says, for these, stuff in your sweet spot, like it's easy for really to implement, it has some broad overall impact. The research says, do two or three of these a year, that's it. The research says that these things that are difficult, that have overall input, impact, one, you should pick one thing in that category to do every year. The things on the bottom, it's really about the need of your community. So if you have a great need in a targeted group, you really need to think about what that's going to look like and which key members. And if it's something that you can do with a group of staff that isn't going to overload them, go ahead and do it, just depending on the need. So I started thinking, what are our initiatives that we have going on? So we have our American Reading Company, our new curriculum in K five for reading. That's a, that's in that quadrant. We also have our grading work and the processes we have in place for grading. We have our D four framework, also falling into that group of pick one a year, and PBIS. So just as I was listing, like the, kind of the main things we have going, all four of them fell into that, really, you should have, be doing one of these at a time. And it helped me think, we really need to think, how do we continue? Because these are all really important things, but we need to be thoughtful about how we implement these going forward before we add more to our teachers and expectations for them to do. So as we take that time, we're going to be, we will be building strategic plan and focusing our work. And instead of coming up with lots and lots of new initiatives, we also want to say, how do we keep the current initiatives going forward? But part of that process will be, are there things we're doing that we can say, you know what, we're not getting the return on investment that we thought we would get on that? It's time to stop that and not, and take that off, decommission that initiative so that we can dedicate our work to PBIS. We can dedicate our focus to implementing PBIS with fidelity. So that's part of this design cycle that our staff will be going through in the next couple months to make sure that we've got a really deliberate, intentional, and well-thought-out strategic plan. So the end product that the groups will be delivering to me will be just a high overview of our strategic, of their goal areas, and they'll be outlining their goal area. I want them to make sure they have a very clear purpose statement. So why are we doing this? Why is that an important area for us to focus on? I also want them to be very intentional about writing, what is this improved state of existence that we want to accomplish? That's going to give us an idea about impact and tell us more about what's motivating for that. And then they'll give a brief description of their initiative. And then they're going to, they, I tweaked this a little bit from the initial template that I gave them, but it's kind of the same stuff in a different order. Is their first year for any new initiative, they're going to spend a good deal of time designing, researching, testing, making sure that it's something that we can take and move forward in city schools of Decatur in an effective and, an effective way. And part of that in the design cycle is, what do we stop doing? Is there something we're doing that's getting in the way or will, will kind of take our energy away from doing this really well? So those will be some of the big deliverables. They'll also be identifying, what is, what are those really big goals we want to accomplish by the fifth year of this plan? And we're not going to plan too much beyond year one and two. We'll outline some general things for year two so that we can kind of use that and be responsive as we go. We'll also be prioritizing, so all those big, high-level documents, we're going to have to decide, hey, where do these fit on this matrix? What is the most, what's the top priority that we should implement first, and then what should we implement next? So we, as we know, we're already doing lots in that quadrant that we're only supposed to do one thing. Is there space, is there capacity to put something in there? Maybe not next year, but maybe the year after. So the action team meeting was really, really good because it helped us be and take that inventory to be reflective about what we're doing, what we have in place already, and will give us an opportunity to determine, what do we need to keep doing? What do we need to stop doing? Is the conclusion of my comments, any questions or comments from the board?
I mean, I'm glad to hear some of this thinking. It sounds to me like a little bit more of a mature strategic process. Like a strategy document, it's not the document, it is the process, and it is a continuous thing. It shouldn't stop. And this feels like there's built-in revisiting of what we're thinking about and doing, and I like, I realize it's hard and it's sort of difficult to go through the process, but the prioritization piece is also critical. We talked just a couple minutes ago about how much stuff that teachers feel like is on their plate, to the extent that we're adding to it by doing a lot of initiatives at once, I think it's worth us rethinking some of that. Right? And so I think this is a pretty good start.
One question, where, there was a good portion of the strategic plan that really didn't involve the teachers and the staff directly, but more were long-term goals, things like infrastructure, kind of use of...
Environmentally, yes, yes.
Sort of thing that really would take a good, you know, from five to years for us if you're budgeting a space. So how do, how do we reconcile that against kind of the new timeline organizational...
Yeah, so those would be some of the areas that we will push probably ahead faster than stuff that will impact teachers. So we are being deliberate about saying, hey, if there's sustainability initiatives or some of the financial transparency initiatives, that doesn't impact our teachers on a daily basis, so we can go ahead and move those forward so that we can start deciding on planning for any sustainability projects going forward.
And my second question is, if there were a couple of initiatives, I think, in there with regards to curriculum development and things that, again, wouldn't change the way that the teachers were teaching in the classroom, but would take time to sort of organize and get off the ground, providing job opportunities or training for high school students that were not traditional four-year colleges or, you know, kind of a decolonizing curriculum work that we're doing. So again, how does, how do we make sure that the community members and stakeholders that have put a lot of time and effort into helping get the strategic plan off the ground are still feel like that voices are being heard?
Yeah, great question. So we are going to do another meeting with our planning team to go over any changes that were made to the strategic planning map, so that they can see those, understand the rationale for those changes. And we really didn't make many changes. We tweaked a couple words here and there. We still have the big buckets that they identified because those were community-inspired, and we want to keep those because we are dedicated to having a very community-inspired strategic plan that our students have also had a voice in. But we will keep those buckets, we'll explain that difference, and then some of it, like the D four framework, we are going to keep doing that. But we need to be strategic about how we do the D four framework. Have we framed it in the right way? Have we given our teachers the tools and resources and skills? So that's part of that, this process, is how do we unpack something as valuable as our D four framework and decolonizing the curriculum? So that can really be a main focus for our school system. Stakeholders, is there anything I missed? I get it, okay.
So Dr. Furman, with this process and, you know, where we are in terms of the action plan and kind of reevaluating things, what do you see as our timeline in terms of, you know, completing the strategic plan?
So we will still complete the strategic plan on time, but we won't be saying at the end, most strategic plans, when you complete it, they say, okay, next year you're going to start launching these initiatives. So our strategic plan will be complete, but... but we will do the design phase next year instead of moving into implementation. So even though we've got, we're going to have our strategic plan ready to inform what we do next, some of it will be, let's move forward with some action steps and areas that we're ready to. Some of the strategic plan will be, we're moving forward with re, kind of designing how we implement the D four framework. But some of it will be, hey, we need to take a better look at this initiative and what's happening in our schools before we decide how we're going to address it. That's all I have.
Thank you. We will move on to chair's comments. The application for the superintendent position will close on December 18th. The Georgia School Boards Association will vet the applications and present them to the board in an executive session in January. The board is still on schedule to begin interviews in February. On November 17th, Dr. Furman, Board Vice Chair James Herndon and I met with Charlotte A. Davis from CAD Vantage LLC to discuss the services that she could offer the board as a lobbyist. On December 6th, we had a similar meeting and discussion with Howard Franklin and Jennifer Winkler LaRosa from Ohio River South. We will discuss those meetings and their proposals a little later in tonight's agenda. On February 2nd, I had the honor of being invited to speak to Carol Duzan's Teaching as a Profession class at Decatur. I thoroughly enjoyed talking with future educators and, you know, hearing about, how can we, you know, encourage more folks to go into profession? I think that pathway program over at Decatur is a great way to do that. And so I really enjoyed talking to those future educators about the benefits of teaching as a career. The students had great questions for me about my experiences, not only as a teacher, but as a school board member. And I just want to thank Ms. Duzan for the invitation. The Decatur High School marching band concluded its competitive session at the White Columns Invitational hosted by Milton High School. The band had its best performance of the season and was awarded the highest rating in the music, visual effects, percussion, color guard, and drum major captions. The band played the most competitive class, which was the most competitive class of the day. Congratulations to the DHS marching band. Congratulations to our Decatur boys and girls cross-country teams on their cross-country championship win. The boys' team won the state title for the third time in four years, and the girls' team now has their first cross-country state championship. Way to go Bulldogs. The Beacon Hill Middle Boys Soccer Team finished their season undefeated and as the Atlanta Metro Middle School Soccer League champion. Wow, congratulations, way to go Beacon Hill Bulldogs. Congratulations to the Decatur Ca- Career Academy for being selected to receive a $20,000 workforce Georgia grant from the Georgia Power Foundation. The grant will go towards expanding the healthcare science program. Keep up the good work, Decatur Career Academy. Faith students exercised their rights by voting for various positions in their school government. Students voted for the faith president, two vice presidents, secretary, treasurer, and grade-level district representatives. They were beyond excited to fill in their ballots and to get their I-voted stickers. I know that was exciting. Way to go Faith Falcons. Thank you to all of the Beacon Hill Middle families who contributed to the annual world language Thanksgiving food drive. Beacon Hill was able to support over 50 families from the Beacon Hill community, and we could not be more grateful for their generosity shown. That's good work Beacon Hill Middle, thank you. The Beacon Hill Middle School clarinet honors ensemble has been selected to perform as a lobby group during the Georgia Music Educators State Conference in January. This is a tremendous honor because small ensembles from across the state on the middle school, high school, and collegiate levels apply for these performances each year. Congratulations again, that's a big deal. The DHS Career Academy graphic design team attended a seven-hour, two-day workshop in November with Soul Play as a part of the High School Sneaker Design Lab. Passed by there and been in there a couple of times, it was a really cool space. The students received a pair of Air Force Ones free to design. Their designs showcased their style and creativity. Thank you Soul Play and way to go Bulldogs. DHS Career Academy, in partnership with Jew Charter School, teamed up to establish D Squared, a program in collaboration with Emory University's Nursing Learning Center that provides students with real-life experience to prepare them for entering the nursing industry. As a result, when the, when they graduate from high school next spring, all will be qualified to enter the workforce as certified nursing assistants and attend college. Congratulations seniors, that's another really big deal. In November, the DHS Family Career Community Leaders of America, or FCCLA, took 15 students to attend their fall leadership conference. Students attended leadership sessions and competed in various competitions. Congratulations to our Knowledge Bowl team, Alicia Jones, Melina Clavijo, Cara Johnson, and Patricia Robinson for placing in the Elite Eight and moving on to the next round in March. Congratulations to Maeve Gallantyne for placing third in the fashion stylist competition. And congratulations to Izzy Miller for winning the Spaceman Award. Way to go DHS FCCLA. On our, our student nurses partnered with, I'm sorry, our school nurses partnered with the City of Decatur Fire and Rescue for training on bleeding control, Narcan administration, and the proper use of fire extinguishers. Our nurses typically go out, put out a lot of medical fires on a regular basis, but on that day, they also learned how to put out real fires. Way to go to our nurses. And then on behalf of the school board, I want to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday break. The board is grateful to the community for entrusting us with our role as school board members, and we look forward to all the good work that the new year will bring. Thank you, thank you. And that concludes my chair's comments. So now we will move on to the consent agenda items, which include personnel reports, school nutrition, and monthly financial reports. May I have a motion to approve the consent items one through three?
I move to approve consent items one, two, three.
Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, all in favor, please say aye. The consent agenda items one to three are approved. The board has several action and discussion items on the agenda for this evening, and Dr. Furman will, Dr. Furman will lead us through those agenda items.
Okay, and the first agenda item that is for discussion with no action is our HR annual report that was provided to the board members. Are there any questions or things that they need clarification or things you would just like to discuss about the human resources report? If you're in your packets online, it's one, page 137.
I would like to see in the future, comparison the last five years. We know, of course, that the student diversity population has gone down significantly, but I'm just curious to see where, has it stayed the same or has it moved up or down?
I know we had her add last year, but we'll do a five-year look back.
Do we have, I'm thinking it was in here, statistics on teachers that leave the system? Broken down by diversity?
Yes.
Separation.
Let's see. If you look on, it's actually page 17, racial breakdown, separation. There's a bar graph for the reason of separation, and then the pie graph shows you the demographic. And that's just last year.
I would be curious to see that as well.
And in that data, yeah.
Who is the, the gold, that 5%? C-H, unless it's Spanish, B's for black, W's for white?
Oh, yeah. Other? I think it's Hispanic.
The gold is red?
No, I think gold is the 1.4.
I'll follow up with her, I'm not sure.
That's green, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if I, if I read this, we're looking at certified is 10-ish percent white? If I just look at that, that way? And yet, it was still meaning, obviously, there's work for us to do on recruiting more black teachers. But almost 50% of our voluntary separations are black. So I mean, what that reads to me is that we are losing ground in terms of the diversity of our teachers.
What page are you on?
So I am combining, part of my feedback is the need to combine. What we ought to do is just have this very clearly set out in the data in front of us. But on slide 11, I'm looking at certified staff by race. And it looks like 30% maybe is black. It's hard for me to read.
Yeah, it's 30, yeah.
In public, I'm looking at, you're here, small font on my computer screen, right? And then when I take a look at slide number 17, or page number 17, and I look at the breakdown of separations, it looks like it's just shy of 50% are black, which would tell me that we're losing ground. A higher percentage of teachers proportionate to the percent of teachers overall are leaving because...
So I will have to separate that out because the racial breakdown of separation is classified and certified.
Okay.
That we, that she needs to, we need to separate that so we can see the difference there.
Okay, we see where I'm going, we're trying to see that, yeah.
Yeah. It's in particular, if the colors don't match all the way through.
Which would be another thing I would actually suggest, just for the ease of us actually going through the data.
Like at the same?
Colors, and it should be the same, right? We should, we should. I also might, this is a bigger conversation, but pie charts are not great about putting space for any other information that you might. So there's other ways to represent the data that is as easy to absorb as a pie chart, but will also allow us the ability to compare. It's hard, it's hard to compare two pie charts.
It is, yeah. Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, um, and, oh.
So the, I'm sorry, they, I just, I, this is a conversation that we had in preparation. I just want to make sure we're public about it. We are expecting to do a compensation study and take a look at. I, I know we had done one last year, but we, a couple of pay increases have happened, but also a number of surrounding districts have substantially increased pay as well. So I, I think it's warranted up for us to, you know, at least while we're in this level of turmoil, maybe think about doing this on a more annualized basis.
Yeah, and we are looking at different consulting firms to do a compensation study for us. They do, a good rigorous compensation study takes about four to six months. So I don't know that we'll have the full compensation study ready by the time we're making budget decisions. But we are committed this year to addressing classified staff pay. That's an easier one for us to look at, just kind of around the metro area and also just set a baseline of, we want our staff to have a living wage.
Also, looking back at a few years, when we were talking about, a few years ago when we were talking about this as well, we offer more in our package than most of the districts. And so just curious how teachers feel about that. You know, do they want us to continue to give more in retirement and healthcare? Or would they rather see it in their paycheck?
With some perception from, perception data from the teachers on how the, how their compensation is packaged.
Right, because I mean, a, a, a rising teacher or, you know, a newer teacher or a younger teacher perhaps, it might not be as important. Or they don't, you know, big picture, they just would rather have more of that in their check. So just wondering if that would help us to retain more teachers? Or if, if we keep the compensation package the way that it is?
If I remem- I think I was sitting in the audience the last time I was there. Carmen, I haven't been in the audience. But if I remember correctly, the biggest piece of that package was, the biggest non-salary piece of that package was related to social security. If I remember correctly, you're just completely utterly unable to do anything about that. Like that is going to be there, we opted in, we can't opt out. If I...
Ever?
I think so. I, I'm starting to talk out of line here, but I, I, that would be something that we need to look into because Tasha's right, obviously, if we're paying 4,000 or so, I seem to remember that number, 4,000 or so per teacher per year on average for social security. And some teachers would rather have that as salary.
Only way we can opt out of social security is if we start our own retirement system. So we have to provide some type of retirement. I don't know, because there was a law passed where people opted out and started their own. I don't know if that's still a possibility for us or we're kind of locked in there. So that's something we...
We should look into, yeah.
We should look at what the options are.
I think it is noteworthy here that in looking at the data she pulled for the next interview that salary is up there. It's one of the things that people are viewed for the somewhat satisfied, dissatisfied as opposed to very satisfied. And it, it, it could be a number of ways we can look to correct that, but the first thing might be to come.
Which graph you're looking at, I'm sorry?
Looked down where she's done, explored other areas of satisfaction. I'm trying to look at boys' experience at separation.
Such hard data to pull. People in education are grossly undercompensated across the board.
But I mean, regardless, you can't, I mean, you, you do exit interviews for a reason.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I agree. If anything, I'm suggesting a question of like, I'm particularly interested in what the feedback for someone who stays in education leaves Decatur feels, that I imagine. That we can fix easier.
And I think we had this conversation in the past, which is that, I think if you ask anybody any question, they would say they think they're underpaid, right? If you ask doctors, lawyers, teachers, pharmacists, they're all going to say they're underpaid. But if they think that they're somewhat underpaid, but they're not quitting, then that's one thing. But, you know, if they tell you you're particularly underpaid.
Like are they, are they staying in education but just going to other districts because they can't?
That's one thing, yeah.
Right.
We just had, we said before we even looked at this, that that was something that we were going to look at. And rather than kind of getting into the weeds of what to do with social security, maybe, yeah, right, maybe it's just something we need to look at, which we said we would.
Yep, yeah, no, I agree. Teach, pay for all of our staff is essential, making sure they are paid compensated fairly, equitably. Okay, the next agenda item is the mid-year budget.
Oh, I mean, are we going to present it to the public? Are we going to put the information or just?
Uh, I was just, I was not, we're not going to do a PowerPoint presentation. It's in the packet and that was shared out on the website.
Not a lot of question, oh wait, I mean, let me say it this way. I think we need to be very clear for anybody listening what the mid-year budget amendment is. And it is a couple of million dollars that we're talking about, drawing from reserves in this year to cover some things that either needed to be in the budget or are new requests. The bulk of it needed to have been in the previous budget. A smaller amount of it is for new requests. I, I said this, and one of the, there is a benefit in the sense that more revenue is coming in, so that's actually a very small offset, about a $150,000 offset. What I have said, and I just want to say it again for the record, when we go into this year's budget cycle, I want to make sure that we're not doing reserve draw amendments over the course of the next year. All of these things should come forward in the budget process so that we can have. I mean, the reason why we have a six-month process is so this is vetted. is so this is vetted, we can talk publicly about it. So, um, I understand the math behind it, I don't love it, but I do understand the math behind it. Um, and as far as the new requests, the biggest of the new requests is around special education and paraprofessional support. I support that if needed, um, so I don't have any particular question there. Um, I just also want to double check, we are clear that we are not anticipating any more reserve draw amendments over the course of this year.
So, this should be, it- we're kind of bringing them funds out at this time, mid-year of ju- amendment. The end of the year, we probably will have to do a- a final year amendment, but I do not anticipate having to pull any money out of reserves.
Yeah, that'll just be balancing.
Correct, balance.
That is- that is acceptable, I just want to make sure we're not pulling anything else over the course of it.
May I have, so.
One of those was an increase, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Or adding more money to the budget from. So, I mean, I- I want to say it loud, so there's one point three million because staff, we didn't have enough staff leave in the model we used, correct?
Correct.
Nursing, we need an extra fifty thousand to cover staffing.
Yep.
Uh, special education, we need more staff to hit the number of requests, that's four hundred thousand.
Yep.
And then interest rates are up, so we made an extra a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in bonds and things like that, correct?
Hundred and fifty. Actually, one fifty-one, oh, oh, oh. And I will point out also, our fund balance is still, um, in the range that I like to see it, which is somewhere between ten and fifteen percent, so, yeah. Okay.
Have any- any other questions on the budget amendment? May I have a motion to approve the mid-year budget amendment?
Motion to approve the mid-year budget amendment?
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The mid-year budget amendment is approved.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Board members. The next, um, item on our agenda this evening is, uh, what is the discussion about does City Schools of Decatur Board want to write a whistleblower policy, um, to put in the policy manual? Um, this came up at our last board meeting, I did some research, um, with GSVA. They sent us two, um, board policies that two other districts used, DeKalb County has a whistleblower policy, Griffin Spalding has a whistleblower policy. Um, and then the discussion for this evening is does City Schools of Decatur, um, are they interested in us drafting one to put before the board, um, in the coming months? I can say that GSVA was kind of like, eh, they don't really encourage a whistleblower policy because we have other venues for that. Um, but if this is something that the board is interested in, uh, we will definitely craft this. I can say I've been kind of thinking about it, and to me, if we can provide a- a way for our staff, an easy way for them to feel more comfortable about being able to say, hey, I saw something that was wrong, I'm- I said, I'm fine with that. So, I'll defer to the board.
Hey, someone's been advocating for this, you hear time and time again from teachers everywhere that they feel like they can't speak up, or they feel like their job is in danger, or something like that. And- and I agree with GSVA that I have not really found that to be grounded, but it's hard to find kind of a place as a teacher or as a staff member to point to and say, oh, yeah, GSVA has my back, or, uh, State of Education has my back, and- and here's the thing. And so, I would like a whistleblower policy to be written to kind of fill in that need. As a superintendent, you know, I mean, you've talked about wanting teachers to feel like they can't speak up, it- it's the first place that I would go. And say like, hey, I- I want to complain about someone, I want to complain, I'm sure, what is the proper way to do it? They don't have to put on their investigative hat, it's- it's right there.
What, um, what I noticed, um, between the two, um, again, it's DeKalb County School Systems whistleblower and Griffin Spalding, is that the Griffin, um, policy lays out the process.
Mm-hmm.
Um, like, very clearly.
Mm.
Um, and so, if we decide that this is something that we want to do, I think this is helpful, I think you've talked about that a lot. Um, and so, you know, it's very, you know, to me, it was very clear, you know, how you start this process, and then, you know, what you should do next. And so, they have about four different levels, um, in this process, just clearly, um, you know, clearly stated. In addition to that, that, you know, then, the DeKalb County policy just kind of gives definition, talks about confidentiality, and both give some very clear definitions, but they stop short of the process. Um, whereas Griffin Spalding gives us the whole process.
Yeah, theirs was very thorough.
I'm in support of that, I think. Crafting our own and potentially having, I like how it's laid out, um, in Griffin, I mean, for a little bit longer, but I don't think that anyone would walk away from not, still not, still having more questions.
I thoroughly agree, I strongly advocate for a whistleblower policy. First of all, I mean, I recognize GSVA's concerns that it might get abused, I think that a well-crafted policy can mitigate that. Um, I don't actually agree with GSVA that there are robust alternatives for teachers. Um, they can't make use of the state whistleblower policy, our teachers cannot, our teachers cannot take advantage of federal whistleblower policies. And so, um, it is confusing, I think, for teachers if they want to raise something exactly how to do it in a protected way. Uh, I get that there might be people out there that would want to abuse it, but in general, I think our index should be to trust the teachers, um, and, uh, provide a very, very clear path for them to bring forward things that frankly, we would want to hear about. I think that this is to benefit the whole system, right? Um, and- and just to acknowledge the history that we have had, we- we have had, there has been, uh, both, I think, perception and a reality that retaliation had existed in, uh, other administrations. And so, trying to just directly address that repeated concern that I think we hear from teachers just at a ground level. We trust you here is a policy that is going to protect you if you raise something that is of concern, we want to hear about it. You're not going to be retaliated against because we are actually binding our own hands. I think that that is worth putting forward for the teachers.
I think- I think that that's, there has been a- a concern, um, either by rumor or maybe anecdotally that if a staff member, a parent, a teacher. Some kind of retaliation, whatever that- whatever that means. But both of these policies have the good faith clause and a retaliation clause. And I don't know if there was any other policy that I've seen, um, that spelled that out. So, maybe if, for no other good reason alone, maybe that will kind of, um, help with that.
And that can be the answer to anything that's a rumor, you know, that's the answer, if- if this happened, here- here it is.
Yeah.
And then, it'll go away if it didn't really happen, this is a rumor, so, definitely support it.
Okay, I will draft the policy, um, for first read at our January board meeting. And our next agenda item is board norms. There was one board norm we were not able to come to agreement last month. Um, and it was goals are within the superintendent's skill set and level of training. Um, I know we, they- they said that they had given us all of the various examples that they would have put forward. There was really nothing in those examples to give us some alternative. Um, so, for discussion tonight, is there, um, any recommendations on some changing to the wording of that goal? But we've had a month to kind of sit on it. Yeah, it's- it's on page one seventy-four in your packet, and it's in quotes, in the summary.
Mm-hmm.
So, what's in quotes here, is that what GSVA says we should, or that's?
That is what y'all had.
So, what did GSVA say we should?
Well, so, they didn't.
They didn't have an opinion?
No.
Mm-mm.
Um, no.
Yeah, this is the one that just kind of went back and forth last month.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I remember that, I didn't know if they had.
No, they didn't weigh in.
Mm-mm.
And there really wasn't any- anything to compare it to because it was just in- in our norm from before.
This, but this- this was in a- in our last norm?
Mm-hmm.
It's the one we struck, we impacted the rest, yeah.
The- the one that we had just come up with, but before we made.
But before that, it was in there.
It was, that was in there, oh, okay.
And then there was nothing to compare it to with other boards, procedures, you know, keep that language, scratch it, change it, because there really wasn't anything to compare it with, so.
Just wonder, I think, and I didn't pull the board norms to look at these, but we have something very specific in there about the goals are aligned with the strategic plan. I just think, like, maybe we can just strike this norm.
But that was the argument, right, because some of the goals that we have for the superintendent don't- aren't necessarily in the strategic plan.
Right, oh, okay, that's right.
That's where we were kind of off, like, should- should they be? Or, but if there was a specific plan for the superintendent, like, meeting an executive coach, for example, that wouldn't necessarily be aligned with the strategic plan.
In summary, um, there was a part of the strategic plan that, you know, the five or ten years, and it was in process, and you just need it, and that's okay.
Right, right, right.
It doesn't mean that you are.
Right, right.
I- I don't think I can support the statement unamended, right? Because I think it is reasonable for us to ask, that there- it is invisible that there. It is able to be imagined that there would be a goal that we would set that the teacher has to, or the superintendent has to stretch or grow to be able to hit. So, if we amend it to say, to the effect of, goals are within the superintendent's skill set and level of training, or the resources- the resources will be provided to reach that, I would be okay with it. What I am not okay with is limiting our ability to set goals based on current levels of skill.
Yes, and when I say it like that, Hans, I think you wouldn't set a goal that was, you were already re- ready, able to meet out of the gate. So, a goal is something to push your skill set to improve, so it just makes.
Anyway.
Right, so now I'm thinking about it, I'm like, why would you set a goal for something that you're already needing at- at onset, so.
But, I mean, I- I do think, I mean, I'm paraphrasing, I suspect, what I've heard from Tasha and Carmen, but it's also to prevent us from putting an unrealistic or unreasonable goal on, right?
Right, and then holding it against you when you don't need that.
Correct, so.
So, adding that resource part.
You will, if we set a goal that's outside of your skill set or ability, even at a stretch level, we would provide the resources to get you there. Um, I think is- is a fair compliment.
Okay. I think it- it puts it on us too, to make sure that what we're asking of the superintendent is reasonable.
Yeah.
Hans, will you say that part of it again?
I'll just write it down.
Can you run that back? I can re-listen to the recording.
No, he said, or the resources will be provided.
Okay.
He said same, sentence the same.
Okay. Got it, so the updated norm would read, goals are within the superintendent's skill set and level of training, or the resources will- resources will be provided to the superintendent to meet that goal.
Yeah. Well, I would assume, within the budget or within the whatever, yeah, right.
Okay.
What was your question, Hans?
I was thinking, like, would we want to put by the board, like, who would be providing those resources?
Oh.
Mm.
Well, the resources would come from the.
From the board, yeah.
Yeah, from the board.
I mean, we're not doing the training, but we, you know, we're not.
I think you should put Hans will train.
I would go ahead, that's a.
My only, no, I would say, anybody but Hans will train.
My only, uh, guess, and I said this the last time, but I will go with the will of the board, as long as, you know, the expectation for mastery is realistic.
Yeah, right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, yeah, that- that's my only, my only concern.
Yeah, because we're really just, we just want to say that we- we ask reasonable goals of the superintendent, right?
And if it's something that the superintendent is, you know, not, I don't know, would you say not a strength, or? And we're saying we're going to give, okay, we're going to give these resources, but like, will they, will superintendent have enough time to?
No.
Um, to learn what they need to learn to- to reach those goals.
And I get that, because we're not always going to be on the board, so we, the way that we may be thinking and interpret it is, would be reasonable, anything that we would ask of the board, of the superintendent. We know we would ask it in a way that would be reasonable, but we can't speak for future board members, so.
I mean, why don't we then just say what we need, and- and do it, we will, we will ask for reasonable goals within the bound, and what we're really talking about is the reasonability of the goal. It might be a reasonable goal that's not within the superintendent's skill set, in which case we will provide resources to get there. But what I think we're trying to say is that we're not going to set forth an unreasonable goal for the superintendent. Now, I get, you know, the lawyers are freaking out because we're unreasonable, it's so wishy-washy, but, um, right? No board would ever consider something and be like, wait a minute, that's unreasonable, let's stop considering it. So, we're considering it.
So, the two options we have are, goals are within the superintendent's skill set and level of training, or the resources will be provided to the superintendent. And then the next version could be the board will set reasonable goals for the superintendent and provide needed resources to meet that goal.
Well, one says, the- the first one, you know, is what's written.
Uh-huh.
It's already written, right?
But add, will provide resources.
Okay.
And then the second one says, the board will set reasonable goals for the superintendent and prov- provide resources to meet that goal.
But I'd say, I like the first.
Okay. Okay.
So, then, are we?
Yep, you can, if you want to make a motion, um, yeah, if you want to ask for a motion, we can approve that, and I will amend the, um, norms.
All right, so may I have a motion to approve the updated board norm?
I move to approve the updated board norm.
All right, thank you, may I have a second?
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The updated board norm is approved. We will move on to the senior tax exemption?
Yes, um, so we've been talking about the senior tax exemption several, for several months now, and we are ready with a final resolution for the board to consider and approve, um, so that we can move this through the legislative session in the upcoming, um, upcoming in January, when the session starts. Um, and just for a summary, we are really keeping the resolution in place as it was. We knew it expired in a short timeframe, so we want to extend it. We're asking, we will be asking for a five-year tax exemption, um, and for ages of sixty-five, seniors aged between sixty-five and sixty-nine. But we are looking, we are asking to raise the income level, um, for qualifying from fifty-three to sixty-two. Hopefully with inflation, uh, we know that social security income also increased over time, so we want to make sure we capture as many seniors as possible.
And just because I know this could get quite complex, to be clear, everyone that currently qualifies will qualify under the new exemption. Additional seniors will qualify under this exemption because we are increasing the amount that we allow for income. Uh, just for the public to- to be aware, nobody that currently qualifies will be taken off. There will be some people that get added because we are accepting a higher, uh, income.
So, with- with the community member, I forgot her name, that.
Ms. Carter.
Ms. Carter?
She would continue to receive the full exemption.
She will, but her concern of.
That her friend also will, because her friend is over seventy.
Oh, right, so, okay, perfect, thank you. Just want to make sure.
Any more questions or discussion?
No, I- I, this will lead into the lobbyist conversation just a second, but everyone on the board is fully in support of this.
Yes.
Senior exemption, we have been, we want to continue for it to work. It is unfortunate, and was not the wish of anyone on this, or the previous board, that it was only a two-year, and I feel terrible, um, that- that that happened, it was not our wish, but it did, and hopefully this five-year gives seniors a little more breathing room.
Right.
That's our goal.
Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the senior tax exemption resolution?
I move to approve the senior tax exemption resolution.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the senior tax exemption resolution is approved.
Yay.
All right, so we will move on to our comments, our discussion about the lobbyist contract.
Okay, as, uh, Madam Chair mentioned, in her comments, two lobbyists were, uh, we met with to receive proposals, and those proposals have been provided to the board. Um, one of the proposals is from, um, CAD Vantage, and that proposal has. and that proposal has two, um, proposals, actually. Um, section one, her scope, um, would just be to cover the legislative session, champion our senior tax exemption, our reapportionment meeting, also some other, just making sure she's keeping the board up to date on all the local happenings and stuff moving through the legislative session, and that would be a standard fee for the six months of twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, her second, um, one is an annual contract, the first six months for all of the same things, plus additional support in the non-legislative, um, time of the year. The fee structure there that she was recommending is that it's a twenty-five thousand dollar for the six, for six months, and then, um, every additional month, it would be three thousand dollars for a total investment of forty-three thousand dollars. And then the second, um, group was Ohio, or the second, um, lobbyist contract is from Ohio River South, um, and he gave just a, a, there's a really comprehensive scope of work and stated goals, and just a little more detail about that, um, lobbyist group. Um, and the compensation, or the cost of this one, is a flat twenty-five thousand, or not, I mean, that's flat five thousand dollars a month. So, um, discussion from the board, um, and then if the board agrees on a lobbyist to use, um, then we'll have a motion for, to delegate the superintendent to negotiate the final contract.
Question? I was gonna ask about, is the five thousand a month for twelve months, or is it for the term of the session? Or is that, like, so in aggregate, are we looking at sixty thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars?
So, what we would, what I typically do for contracts, like, with the monthly fee, is we build into the contract, like, we can separate from the contract, within thirty days, either party can terminate.
No, but I mean, we're, are they thinking that we're paying them five thousand dollars a month added to an item, or?
So, we would separate the contract, yeah, yep.
And are we, uh, when you guys met with these two groups, were they under the, under the impression that you were just looking for some help with the senior exemption? Or are you looking for a, more of a comprehensive sort of package? Like, you want to understand, um, multiple educational bills, you want reporting back, um, you want to understand, you want relationships with legislators, you want kind of, you know, the whole, the whole thing?
That, I, I think we clearly conveyed that.
Yeah, I said that we're looking for four things. We're looking for someone to help the state schools of Decatur have a relationship with the DeCap delegation, so that in the future, when we wanna ask questions, we can. We're looking for someone to keep us abreast of educated-related legislation, like the, you know, critical rate tier bills, et cetera, um, and to use, three, to help us, like when Jana has gone down to speak at the board, and at the Georgia Assembly, someone who can help facilitate that, et cetera, and help us do that. And then four, someone who could strategize us to have a more powerful voice when we do wanna get involved in things. Made it very clear to Charlotte, that's what we did, and then, and then I, and then I commented to them that, uh, Ohio River South sort of said here, the four things we want to do, and, and they hit on all four of those as they were doing their presentation, so.
Did any of them tell you a couple of things, like, especially for a group like Ohio River South, which of these lobbyists would be the one dedicated to us, and how many other school systems or groups they're working with? Um, because Decatur's a huge school system, and are we gonna be the smallest fish in their big pond? Um, that kinda determines how much attention we get, um, and, uh, obviously, I guess, Charlotte works by herself, how big of a staff we have, and how accessible they can be to the young.
Well, um, we would work directly with-
Jennifer?
Jennifer, um, her whole name, um, Jennifer Winkler LaRosa. She was on the call with us as well, um, as Howard Franklin, and so they currently, they told us that they currently do not have any other school systems that they work with, and so we would have their full attention.
They have no other clients at all?
No, no other school system. Right, uh, 'cause I don't, I didn't get the perception that with, uh, Charlotte, we would be the only people she's working with.
I don't think, I don't remember her saying she had other school systems she was working with. I think we would be, from my recollection, we would be one of her first forays, that she is very familiar with Decatur, um, because she worked with the firm that represents the, the city of Decatur.
So, if she doesn't represent a school system, who else does she represent? Like, what other, if they, if she doesn't handle educational lobbying, then what else does she do?
Mostly municipal.
Yeah, municipal groups, she was previously with, uh, the GMA, handled their contract lobbying.
I don't know that we would, this is just my assumption, we're gonna talk to two, but, and then we had the previous experience, I don't know that we would be the only entity that somebody would be working with.
You won't be.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
You won't be.
Yeah. So, uh, I was, I will say that I like that, um, Jennifer has worked with other, three other large school systems in the metro Atlanta area. The, um, lobbyist from Ohio River South, so she has, um, years of experience in working, um, with school systems. Um, whereas Charlotte didn't have that.
Um, Charlotte ha- or do we know if Charlotte or Ohio River South, if they have a close relationship with the delegation?
Well, um, both Howard Franklin and Jennifer, um, Winkler LaRosa, um, have relationships with the DeCap delegation, and they both live in DeCap County. Um, and I like that, too, that, that they're DeCap County residents. Um, um, Charlotte doesn't live in DeCap County.
Yeah, Howard, so I, I had some experience with the firm, with, when I was at the, um, you know, at Atlanta, and Howard actually works directly with Stacey Abrams in her office when she was in the, she, so he's, it is, it's a well-connected firm, and I'm familiar with him, and, um, I, I don't know Jennifer, the Raca, the COO as well, I have worked with. Yeah, I mean, I would recommend them. Without rule of reservation.
Um, I even liked the pro- the proposal, this was a lot more extensive, um, with Ohio River South versus the other CAD, um, proposal.
I think I would have liked to have had a third person to look at, I think it's an interesting time, we have to, um, name, I think, namely, express, I, I think it's, it's good to have somebody who's local, but, uh, you know, some of, some of our agenda is gonna go beyond the DeCap delegation, and he, I guess, he, she doesn't mention it all, but he does mention that he, he worked well with Governor Kemp in his office, and, you know, you want somebody that is able to, uh, work well with a very- So, I think, even, that would have even, honestly, been my perspective. Yeah, yeah, um, it's, it's part of what we, what we think, or how much we like them, how well can they work with.
But I don't think that-
All right. But, I think if this is, if this is, then I think, I think, um, this-
And I've thought about that, I've debated about that a, a lot, in terms of, and I asked the question when we were in the meeting, I say, you know, we've been discussing with this conservative-leaning, uh, state government, you know, what our lobbyists, you know, who they represent, and what they should be like. And, uh, but I'm concerned about that, to say, well, then our lobbyist needs to be a, I mean, a Republican because of this, um-
Well, I think quite the opposite, they should, you shouldn't, they, you shouldn't be able to tell, I think. They should just be able to afford those relationships, like, that you should, I don't think that they should be forward presenting in their, in their views at all, but they should be able to, like, sort of, political.
And he, and so that was his response, that, you know, he didn't think that we should, you know, that they are, um, made up of folks on both sides of the aisle, um, and that, you know, it's about who can work with folks. But if you go and look at the websites, oftentimes, folks are bragging, um, about who they, you know, which side they're on. If you go, you look like, our last lobbyist, if you went to that website, it's, you know, Governor Kemp is on every page, so they want you to, they're selling their relationship with him. Um, and so, 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 you know, if you are, I don't know how, what else do they do besides say that they work on both sides of the aisle, if you're not leaning towards that side of government? You know, it's like, it's okay for the folks on that side right now, because that's who's in office, and if you're not, that's not how you affiliate. You understand what I'm saying?
I do, and I, I think, it, it's, sometimes, I think, a lot of, I think sometimes with some of these bills, you wanna know who's gonna vote which way, and you want them to tell you, and you also want these people to be able to share agendas through, um, regardless of, about these personally. And I'm not saying this guy doesn't, 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 is, is not wanting to be able to do the job. I think I would have, um, I think I would have liked a, a third candidate. I think the other thing, too, is that educational, um, bills and educational lobbying is complicated. Um, before, you know, in my day job, I'd do medical legislative as a stand. And it's so complicated, and some of it is just understanding who sits on what committee, and who loves hosting. That's where these people are so profoundly helpful, and, um, so, um, I think, it sounds like, I think, in order to do our due diligence to the senior home, I guess, we have to, we have to- And, um, I think this- I think, it's, it's kind of what I'm understanding from the will of course timeline. But it is, I think, educational, um, advocacy is- A lot of these bills are, are complicated, and they're not just within the, you know, DeCap, care, way up the top of the house.
Yeah.
My very, well, school board-related experience is that, it sounds like you're scrapping the perfect lobbyist, and I'm not sure, is it, I mean, we were told in no uncertain terms, that the people who can help have the education conversation on the state level are not at all the people we need to have a good relationship with the DeCap delegation to deal with the very pressing and regularly occurring bill. I mean, Charlotte came from a recommendation for someone who was working with the city. It was like, that person's take was, what city schools of Decatur need, is a whole lot of attention to be paid to what's happening with DeCap, the DeCap delegation, and all of that sort of stuff. Um, but then you're right, it, we also want that person to be able to say, there's a new CRT bill. We, we want our voice heard there, we want someone at the State Board of Education, at Governor Kemp, et cetera. That person is honestly probably just a very different person than the person needed in the short term. Um, I mean, I can say with a high level of comfort, just based on my experience with them, that, that Ohio River South is gonna be a good short-term solution. I don't know about long-term. They're absolutely gonna be able to meet our needs in the, in the short term. And I, I don't, I mean, that, that's not to say anything about the other proposal, I just don't know. Um, but, I, 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 I thought part of what we discussed earlier as well was the fact that this allows us the ability to get a solution in place for this upcoming session, and buys us the time to evaluate over that time, right? And so, you know, almost the most important thing is that if we have a great relationship with Jennifer, and we feel like she's doing a great job, and she's covering all of the bases, then we're not in an issue, and if we don't, we have the flexibility in the contract to do so.
Any other questions or discussion?
And he wants a one, he wants month-to-month, or he wants, um, a year?
I, it's, I don't think that's clearly stated in here. It's not clear, the, it was proposed for the retainer and exchange, a monthly rate. It doesn't propose, um, yeah, so what I, if this is the firm that you, the board wants to look at a contract with, I would work with him and, and our counsel, on making sure we have a contract for what we need.
A thirty-day, like, no-
Yeah, exactly, like, hey, if we can sever this within thirty days, and, or ways, if that's what we need.
All right, so then, may I have a motion to approve Dr. Furman to finalize the contract with Ohio River, River South lobbyist, um, firm on behalf of the board?
I move to do that.
It's in your script.
Sorry, Jana, I, it was a whole lot, hold on.
I move to-
If we're, um, uh, I move to approve Dr. Furman to finalize a contract with Ohio River South lobbyist firm on behalf of the board.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Dr. Furman is approved to finalize the contract with Ohio River Lobbyist Firm on behalf of the board.
All right.
May I have just a quick moment, I wanted to go back on the senior homestead exemption. We said as a body that we approved the senior homestead exemption. I just wanted to very quickly clarify for anyone listening in the public that that means that we are approving it to send to the delegation of the state. The state will then pass it for a resolution, which will then be voted on by the community in the fall. So, we're at the beginning of the process, not the end. But we've done what we can do, yes, we don't-
Well, we still have more to do when it comes to making the communities aware, and they know why they should support this bill when they get to the, to the election move on, um, November, in November of two thousand twenty-three. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda are our board policies for approval, and these are the instructional policies. We did have one comment for a recommendation on a change to policy IDBA, which is sexual education policy. When I made the changes to this one, I deleted that definition. I did not feel like that definition matched, um, our beliefs as a school system and as a board. The recommendation that came in is they wanted us to keep that definition on the top of the policy.
What, this one is this, which one is?
It's, uh, pay, oh, I don't have it on a page, it's I-B-D-A, it's eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-
Oh, it's on the page.
Yeah.
From the page?
Like, probably page one ninety. Yeah, so, but, I don't think it has a page.
I-B-D-A?
Uh-huh, yeah, one ninety-one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I struck that first paragraph out, public, the person that made the comment wanted us to keep that.
That person was coming on the board?
No, it was, uh, that, everything's open for public comment, and they can just send a, make a comment.
And they wanted to put this definition back in?
Yep.
No, I don't support that, I support continuing it being struck out.
Dr. Furman, you, can you clarify, if somebody submitted a comment that wanted it back in?
Yes, so, when, after the board does their first review, we post all of these policies on our Assembly website for public comment, to give the public a chance to provide their input on these various policies. Um, and they see the proposed changes, they see it, just as you guys see it, and, um, as someone was reviewing our proposed policy, they submitted that comment. James, Jana?
I'm reading it again.
Yeah, me too. I know, I had to read it twice.
Basically, this is about, uh, education, okay, I'm fine with this saying that.
Agreed.
All right. If, uh, Madam Chair will make a motion, we can approve, um, the instructional policies.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the instructional policies?
Motion to approve the instructional policy.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the instructional policies are approved.
All right, the last item for, and this is discussion only, are the, um, there are two reform policies. These are the reform policies that we discussed at the work session. I've made some edits to those, so these will go on the, um, website for public review and comment, um, up through the next board meeting. And also opportunity for the board to take another look at those, um, and if you see things that we missed on your, um, input, please let us know. The last group of the big- The last group, or the big last group of policies or batch of policies that is up for, um, policy review. The policies regarding, our, our policies are J policies and, um, policy K, which is about school facilities. Um, very few changes on these. I did want to point out a couple of things to the board on these changes. Um, there's two policies, JAA Equity Educational Opportunities and JCAC Sexual Harassment of Students. In both of those policies, they gave a, a long list of timelines and things to follow. We already have, um, kind of synchronized timelines for things, so we took out their proposed timelines and just refer, hey, we're going to use the, the procedures we already have in place for timelines instead of those. Um, and then all the rest of the changes are just very minor, with the exception of policy, corporal punishment policy, JDA. We deleted everything in that policy and said that city schools of. Punishment. Those are, are, uh.
Set up for discussion?
It, if there, if the board would like to discuss any of these first draft policies, I will take notes.
What I would like to do is make sure in both of the additions on JAA and, uh, JCAC,
Uh-huh.
where it says, uh, the grievance and appeals process are outlined in the CSD, uh, I, that probably is supposed to be title, um, non-investigation procedures, if we can just make that be a hyperlink, so that anybody's looking at it can immediately go see those. And then basically the exact same comment on the other, that part three under JAA, when all complaints within a timeline identified by federal state regulations and local CSD procedures, make sure the CSD procedures are hyperlinked.
Do that. Okay. If there are no other comments about the last batch of, big batch of policies, um, turn it back over to Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, this month, the board was provided with monthly school reports and an overall summary with highlights from the athletics department as, um, information only. Um, we'll move on to future dates. We have future dates listed on the agenda for the upcoming meetings, training, and retreats. Board members, are there any questions about the future dates for the work of the board? All right. Well, then, thank you all for joining us this evening. This meeting is adjourned at eight forty-five P.M.
The regulation for signature.
Thank you.